Please stand for the flag.
I believe that two of the flag of the United States of America and two of the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good show here tonight. Would you introduce people?
Hello. So, we have our full board here. Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort, Perry Brown, Richulat, and I'm Kristen Powers. And everybody else, if you could just make sure that you've signed in. Everybody online, if you are here under an anonymous name, you'll just have to state who you are before participating. All questions are directed at Mike. And I believe that's everything.
Okay, excellent.
There are a couple of additions. So there was an updated agenda that was sent out, I believe, on Monday. And in addition to that, just an update on the speed sign, the one speed sign that wasn't working, the town hall auditorium installation, the light installation. And there was a message about something called Discover Books, a Dropbox for new business. I did not have you on the agenda, but Judy had emailed passing a question along. Were you planning and hoping to be on the agenda?
Well, I thought it was for email last week.
Well, that was my terrible mistake. So another addition is that Rose is here, under pre-requested.
Everybody okay with Rose?
Yeah, we're great with Chris.
Perfect. Pre-requested.
And no deletions, except, well, we won't have to talk about the town hall washing, I'm guessing, under facilities report.
That'll be under Mike.
Okay, perfect. So we can delete that. And then the minutes that need approval are from June 13th.
Did everybody think of those minutes?
All moved to approval.
All seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Devin?
See you all. Got some.
Thank you for coming down.
Absolutely.
Love it when you're the bearer of good news.
I try to be as much as possible. You sit right here if that's okay. Alright, so I'm really here as a sort of introduction to this program tonight, just hoping to sort of go over the details, see if there's any questions high level, and then come back to you guys in August and hopefully potentially dive into this. So, high level, this is the Municipal Technical Assistance Program. And what this is aiming to serve is a lack of municipal capacity, especially for small rural communities in Vermont. So during the Budget Adjustment Act, the governor was like, hey, you know, we're not seeing the amount of ARPA money to some of these rural communities that we had hoped. And it really was being concentrated in the more urban places, in Chittenden County specifically. So Rutland actually was, is currently the second lowest county to receive ARPA funds outside of that, you know, standard allotment that the town got and every town got. So to sort of solve this potential issue, they created this Municipal Technical Assistance Program. And what that is, according to the Act 3 or H145, to provide expanded and technical administrative assistance to municipalities with high need that may be eligible for state or federal funding. So the agency of administration contracted with regional planning commissions to help administer this program. And they also created a community index to determine which towns are sort of of the highest need. These indices that the state creates, of which there are many, are not perfect, right? But they needed some objective way to say, where does Pollet rank in the 250 towns in Vermont in their need? So they had a number of criteria, both sort of capacity based and need based. That could be like, does the town have a town manager? What is their grand list value? How many people in town? All those factors attributed to it. So the top 25% of all those towns within the high need index got pre-approved for this program. So that means you don't have to apply, there's no cost to the town at all, you are the automatic sort of towns that are entered into this opportunity. So I've included on this front page here, the pre-approved towns within Rutland region, Ira, Benson, Mount Tabor, Timmin, West Haven, Pollet, and Middletown Springs. So Pollet, as you can see, came in at around 79.7% within that top 25. So that means if the town chooses, you know, after we talk about it, you think about it for a bit, to participate in the program, there's nothing else you have to do. You just sign a paper and we'll start marking on it right away. So what is potentially eligible for this program are a number of state and federal grants that are available now. The bulk of those open grant programs are for water, wastewater, housing, this community recovery, workforce development, business support line, which is super broad, I realize, climate change mitigation and resilience, and then this sort of other bucket. And the other bucket really is very project dependent and needs to be pre-approved by the state. So, you know, if there is an idea out there, we'll just run it by the AOA and see, hey, is this, could this potentially fit the program? So I know the town has got a lot of stuff going on, great stuff, you know, zoning by law updates. I know there's going to be a town plan coming along. There's the West Pollet Village Master Plan. We've got some sidewalks happening in town. So I understand there is a lot happening. So when I saw this opportunity in Pollet on the list, I got excited thinking about this West Pollet project, right? You guys are going through the scoping now. It could, the timing could work out perfectly where that ends and sort of.
The plan is complete.
It is complete. Okay, I knew it was very close.
Yeah, we just submitted the documentation this week. It was due by the end of June.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, the timing is great.
If there is a recommendation from that plan that could fit this program, then hey, you know, let's look at that and see if there's something we can find, especially those first two categories are big, right? Wastewater, water and the housing. And I think it's worth noting too, on the housing front, you know, the Regional Planning Commission felt like there was a lack of data and understanding of the housing needs in Rutland County. You know, there's a lot of stuff in Chittenden County and elsewhere going on. So we contracted with Vermont Housing Finance Agency to do a regional housing needs assessment of the entire Rutland region. We also asked them to do a case study of like three towns that represent the three sort of buckets within the Rutland County, which are our big towns, middle sized towns, and small towns. So we asked them to actually look at Pollet as one representative sample of a town in Rutland County. So we're going to have data from that by the end of July, and that could help inform this too, on top of the work that you've already done. So that's just kind of a side note to consider. So the next page here, the scope of work, what is it that we'll actually do and help the town with? So it starts with this sort of community needs assessment. And that could look a lot of different ways. It could be simply reviewing your town plan, or looking at this what's called Village Master Plan, or if there's a project already like ready in the hopper or you know you want it, we can sort of skip this step and jump right into it. If there's not, we can actually perform an all-out community needs assessment, which may or may not be valuable. I know with all the planning that you have been doing, there's probably something there to go on. But what this is intended to do is really identify that project, is this program going to work for the town? And then ultimately, the program is going to pay for us to help you apply for grants, manage the grant, implement the grant from start to finish. So the town doesn't have to manage all this stuff on their own. And that's really what this is getting at, is municipal staff augmentation, so you can take advantage of those opportunities that are, they're going away quickly. And there is a time clock on this, right? So just like your ARPA funds, they had to be expended by, what, 2026, or at least committed by that timeframe. Similar here with this program, since some of these are state passed through dollars. So ideally, the program is asking us, work with the town and try to identify one of the projects by the end of the calendar year. That doesn't mean it has to be fully scoped and understood, we at least need to understand, we should be at that part by December 31, '23. Looking sort of quick, high level at the current town plan and some of the census data on this next page, you know, Pollet's town plans from 2016. I know you're going to be doing a rewrite very soon or actively working on it. So some of these might be out of date, maybe they're not reflective of the current priorities of the town. But I just wanted to include them on this sheet to start to sort of think about, what are the things around facilities, housing, economic development, that could be opportunities for the town? Any questions, high level, in the weeds on this? What are your sort of first blush thoughts on, you know, is this something you're interested in? Is there a project? Is there a big hole that is in town right now?
So I have a question. Would this be a good fit for like, for planning to centralize the town shed? We have two locations now. But if we wanted to put one up with a salt shed, is that something that would fit into the scope of it?
God, I wish I could say yes. Every single town has asked the same thing. And I understand that is a real need. Unfortunately, the money found within this program likely wouldn't cover something like that. Any sort of salt, state of salt shed, garage, municipal town office, that's likely not going to be a good fit, unfortunately.
But you could help with the grants.
Yeah.
If we wanted to apply for grants, you would have people available to help us, the town, apply for those grants.
Right. It sends it falls outside of those sort of four traditional categories within here. We would just say, hey, this is what the town is looking for. Would you allow that? So we'd seek that sort of pre-approval. If they say yes, we would help you every step of the way, absolutely. Even if that means like a little bit of scoping or strategic planning, that could be potentially eligible as well.
The other thing is sewer, sewer plant upgrades and stuff like that, there's a need for more, more upgrades to be done to our plant to make it run more efficiently. So that would be something that falls into the.
Yeah, we've been working with John Kiernan from, what's his organization called?
Our Cap.
Yeah.
What's that again?
Our Cap?
Okay.
And he, evidently, they're, they're a nonprofit organization that also gets funds from the state. And he's been, he's been, he's met with us several times over the past year. And we were planning to work with him in trying to do a grant for the wastewater plant.
Okay.
But I don't know if this would, I don't know if the stuff he's working on would be the same stuff that this would access or not.
But I think we needed to do a, we did the feasibility study, but then we needed to go to the next, or didn't we even finish the feasibility study, which was something that he needed done?
I'm not sure where we're at with that. Yeah, so.
So it's something we could coordinate.
It's something, if we could coordinate with him and you guys and just be able to access more money. The whole point is that the wastewater plant costs too much for the fees that people have. So we have to do something.
Gotcha.
To improve it, or streamline it, or something to make.
Affordable housing.
Less.
Sit down here.
It fits under affordable housing because the sewer plant is too challenging for the economy of people in town.
It says water, wastewater, right here. So that sewer plant clearly fits under that.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe it's one of these things where if there is already an opportunity with this sort of free money and capacity builder on the side, it could be, let's double down, or let's not duplicate and try to look for another opportunity.
I think that we needed to do some work on the front side, the feasibility study or something like that. We've, we have worked with an engineering company to give us ideas on what, what we could do, whether we could convert some of the holding facility into a sludge storage.
Okay.
Or to build a sludge storage. And, and we had, we'd worked in that, but I don't, it didn't like go out for requests or proposals. It hasn't gone that far yet. So I'm not, I'm not sure that what's the next step is. But I can, I can work with getting you or Jessica's been involved with, with all this planning too, and our operator, Jill. And the oil tanners, the engineering outfit that's looked at it already. So we can kind of get everybody all together so that, or maybe have a meeting even or something to, to get everybody on the same page and see what we need, where we need, how we need to move forward.
Perfect. That sounds great.
Also, I was thinking, Devin, I should just send you the West Pollet Village Master Plan that just got completed. And you could have a look through that and see if any of the projects suggested in there would be a fit for this at all.
Yeah, were there any recommendations from that plan that really got you guys excited?
They identified, the plan identified several areas that were of the most concern.
Okay.
And that's kind of what we were looking at.
Wastewater, obviously.
Wastewater and affordable housing and some of the traffic conditions in the village itself. And those were.
Yeah, there's obviously the store. I think that how they're moving ahead with the village store issue is that a group of West Pollet citizens is going to get together and possibly form a nonprofit, or at least some kind of working group, to attempt to look into making a community store. So I know at least one meeting has happened regarding that.
Can I make a suggestion on the storefront? No point. I've been working with the town of Benson and trying to restore their village store. I don't know if you guys remember, burnt down three, four years ago, left a huge hole in the center of town. The Preservation Trust of Vermont in Vermont Council of Rural Development got $10 million to help Vermont towns do just that. So they're helping the town of Benson. I'm sure I could connect you with Ben Doyle. They might be able to help you guys work through this too. They do everything from like, you know, business plans and funding stacks and all the things that get really complicated that need to be really worked out. And they have some success in models like Pierce's store in Truesberry. They own that store and help the town renovate that. So I'll connect you with those.
That would be a good resource to pass on to those folks who are working on that.
Yeah. So there's a lot here. Just in this two minutes, several different potential opportunities are in the works here. So I am getting married. I'm going to be out of town pretty much all July.
Congratulations.
So I think it's best if you sort of sit on this, think about it for July, and I'll come back in August again, and we can talk more. And then, you know, potentially connect with some of these other resources and groups working kind of in tangent with the town, if that sounds good to you all. And at that point, if you're, we're really interested, we can have you sign onto the program. Again, there's no cost to the town. It's really, they want to, they want towns to be sure this is something they want before moving on to another town. We're essentially going to start with this top seven and move down the list until somebody says yes. So hoping you guys will say yes, only because I haven't seen the state put money behind this effort this way before. It's not going to fix all the problems. I mean, I was in Benson last night, I was in Middletown last week, Mount Tabor the week before. Every town is saying the same thing, that, you know, these short-term gap fillers on capacity aren't going to do a damn long term, and that, you know, towns are feeling like they need a part-time town administrator. And road foremen are, you know, the burden to do paperwork is too great. So understanding that, you know, those needs are real, and we should address those and have a plan long term. And we're trying to communicate that to the state, whether that, something will actually happen or not is another question. But hopefully this will be something at least in the short term.
Okay. Frank?
This party was called planning group. What kind of money are you talking about ultimately would be a high-end, would you say, for any one of these projects?
Some of the programs we're talking about don't even have a cap on the funding. So potentially millions and millions of dollars. Obviously, it's got to fit the projects. All these programs sort of are different. So I can't give you like a dollar amount, but a lot of money.
That's why I was personally very excited when I heard that Pollet was pre-approved for this, because some of these federal pots of cash that have come down the line are pretty big. And like you said, big towns in Chittenden County are able to get at them. And we haven't been able to.
Yeah. And I'll say, this program, no town in Chittenden County is eligible. They said, nope, this is for everyone else. You got yours. Thank you very much, which is kind of nice.
All righty.
Now, I would just remind you that we started the replacement of Dutchy's store some years ago, and the foundation of it was fully built. And then it was filled in for safety reasons because the store never was built. And the wood was stripped away. However, that foundation can easily be cleaned out. And the, that we were doing was actually mixed use, housing and commercials. So the potential for affordable housing mixed with a store would make a lot of sense. And the foundation is already there. So you've got yourself a pretty big front-end expense taken care of on that. And there are plans available on all of this if you want to pursue it.
The group right now honestly wasn't even thinking of rebuilding on that spot because they didn't think that that kind of money would be available. I'm pretty certain that the group in West Pollet working on it was thinking of trying to acquire an existing building in West Pollet to transform into a store. But, you know, the sky's the limit, maybe.
We certainly keep that option open.
And that property is being thought of as for the sludge, additional sludge.
Julie, thanks. Julie?
Yeah, I just want to point out, so affordable housing is one of the things on there. And I don't know what the parameters around affordable housing are. But I do think it's really important that we again, and I'll say this every day, all day, address the missing middle. And I actually think that talking to people in our school supervisor reunions is a great place to start, because they can identify how big the housing problem is for getting people to work in our district.
For recruitment and retention, yeah. Yep, I'm actually meeting with ACCD on Friday to talk about their middle, missing middle program, because that's a huge piece of this.
There was a very interesting proposal in the West Pollet Master Plan about a town-owned, a town-owned lot that's part of the, part of the old quarry, right? That, that could potentially be parceled out and sold, made some kind of planned unit development. It's, I can't explain it as well as the, as the plan does. But right now, the town owns a bunch of land. It's not really, it's not on our grand list. It's not really doing anything. And if there was a way to move forward on making it be available for housing, we, I don't know how feasible that is, but it's in the plan. So it might be something to
Why not?
To think about.
Yeah. Great.
Does anybody else have any questions for Devin?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming down and sharing this good news with us.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm looking forward to connecting in August. Have a great.
Have an excellent wedding.
Congratulations.
Enjoy. Thank you. Rose?
Hello. Thank you Chairman Beecher and the board. I appreciate you listening to me again this week. Looking for updates on some of the items, and then a new request. So I'll start with the new request. We're looking for any tidying up of the exterior of the building, weed whacking, cleaning the, like power washing or cleaning the outside, just so it's all nice and pretty for hopefully the many guests that'll come through the town hall that day. And then wondering if you've received an update on the air conditioner for the auditorium, and where we are with the lighting for the auditorium.
I'll take the air conditioner. That's an easy one. He's coming tomorrow to install it.
Excellent.
I've got a quote here for the lights. I think everyone's got a copy of it. Did you give everyone a copy?
It was forwarded.
It was forwarded electronically.
Okay, well, I got, it's printed off here. I don't know if you want to talk about it now, our facilities, either or, take a look at.
We're on it right now. Okay.
That's the quote that I got from.
Six heavy-duty boxes, wire nuts, fasteners, six wall sconces, description of work, six wall sconces, six chandeliers. Chandeliers need to be hung from heavy-duty boxes to the weight to carry and replace and install. And a total of parts and labor is $25.75.
That's the quote I got from Matt, you know, MC Electric. So it's $500 for parts and $2,000 for labor.
I would suggest having do it.
That's a 24 hours leave.
Yeah, 24 hours.
24 hours to do it.
I mean, thinking about electrician work I've gotten done, that seems pretty reasonable.
That looks like a very fair rate.
And it may, it may be less. We didn't go up in the attic and see what were for boxes up there for the chandeliers. So it, it could.
That's a, that's a good faith estimate. If he runs.
He went high on.
He went a little high. If he runs shorter, he'll adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
So basically time and materials.
Yeah.
Not to exceed $24.75.
Yeah.
Julie?
There is still some money left in the town hall renovation fund. A couple of years ago, we had done a fundraiser to acquire the sconces. And we also had some additional funds left over to go towards the electrician installing them. It's not $2,500. I don't have the figure off the top of my head. It's definitely under $1,000. And I'm thinking it's close to like $6,000. But there is some money there.
And you could use that money first and then just do the rest from the.
And then just cover the rest.
The maintenance fund.
I don't, I don't think, he said he could do it in time for the.
He did say that.
So that's, that right there is, is huge. And today's market.
The 22nd is the date, right? Yeah.
There also is still money left in that line item of the budget. We're preparing the maintenance on town hall for the current year that we're in, and we can put it on this year if we make the decision to do it.
Okay. That sounds great. If he needs a motion, I'll make a motion that we, that we hire this, MC Electric, to put in the sconces.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. You want to reach out to him and let him know?
Yes, I will do that.
Washing of the exteriors. You're welcome.
I, I.
Call the fire department.
Call, we have a volunteer.
Uh, well.
Two hands.
Oh, wow. When shall we meet down here, Julie?
So my idea actually is, I know like BBA requires community service if they're students, and working for municipalities counts.
Great idea.
The other thing, so when Judy reached out to me, she had said that John Brown used to do it. And it wasn't so much of a power wash. He would come and hook up a hose and just kind of hose it down. So I'm not sure if John Brown is still interested in that. But that was just something that Judy asked me to mention. And then I do know that in communicating with the highway department.
And then, I do know that in communicating with the highway department about getting the back of the town hall weed whack to get the AC installed, the town is currently lacking a functional weed whacker. So, I wouldn't volunteer the highway department is my only suggestion there.
You got Matt to cut all the brush and stuff down there by the other ones, right?
Yes. Did someone go down and weed eat down there?
I didn't go down and make sure, but.
There was room to get no one in there.
Right, and they were supposed to be all cut around the other two because they were all choked up. He couldn't get to them to service them.
Dale had reached out to him and he was supposed to come, so I haven't been back there myself, but.
We hadn't received the new weed, the weed eater. Yeah, that didn't come. Okay. Still backordered.
So, I don't know if somebody knows somebody that, that would be interested in washing. Does Matt do stuff like that? I don't know Matt at all, so.
How would one reach out to the BBA Volunteer Network? I know there's the Palet Volunteer Network as well. I was thinking like a front-board forum. I can certainly forward to you the contact information for some of the BBA directors that might have contact information for students that still need community service hours that might be interested in it. I can also reach out to the. I have both a power washer and a weed whacker that I would donate to a student if I wanted to use it if it helped them to get their community service hours. Okay. Ideas.
So, we got two solid answers and one, one we'll work on, so.
Well, and it, and I mean, if John Brown used to do it, if we can't get a student, maybe we reach out to him again.
He might come out of the woods, I don't know. I haven't seen him in a while.
Anything else, Rose, or?
Nope, that was it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
See you on the 22nd.
Okay. So, now, any announcements? Zoning administrators report. Hi Nancy.
Hi there. I attended a two-day zoning seminar presented by VLCT. Day one talked about the new housing codes, but not much applies to us because we don't have municipal water supply. The only thing that does apply to us is that they are going to ask that every zoning district allow to have duplex housing or two-family housing. The other thing that was discussed was a clarification on permitted use and that definition will be included in our new bylaws. Jessica has been given a copy of it. I have it. The other thing that they stressed was to make sure that all Class IV roads in our area are posted for no maintenance. On day two, they talked about short-term rentals. They mentioned that short-term rental should be done as ordinances and not bylaws. So, I will be taking that task on to at least prepare a draft for short-term rental ordinance and I have asked two hosts in the area of short-term rentals to assist me in that. And really, it's going to be kind of a registry-type thing with contact information. So, again, it's not supposed to be a punitive thing. The other thing too, for the sled work to consider is whether or not a lot of the towns are imposing that 1% tax on short-term rentals and that 1% comes directly back to the town. I have a DRB meeting tomorrow for one property and finally, I reviewed the DRB ruling and parking requirements per max market. Yes, that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? Okay. Artie?
Let me try to understand this. Every single zoning district, they want the towns to approve duplex housing?
That it accommodates two-family housing. I think Jessica has more.
I believe that it's any, any zoning district in which we currently allow single-family residents, we will need to allow two-family residents as well. Obviously, we don't need to allow two-family residents in Highland or anyplace we don't currently allow single-family residents, but it doesn't strike me as a very large change. I mean, technically, my home is a two, is a two-family resident. It's got a separate little apartment in it.
Well, actually, it could potentially be a very large change with regard to property values.
Well, it comes down from the state, so we, we do it.
Currently, most of, if I'm not mistaken, most of our bylaws allow for accessory anyway, so it would be the same thing.
Yeah, they all, they almost all allow for accessory dwelling units as well, so. Yeah, I believe it will affect, I was looking last night at the bylaws. I think it will probably affect five out of seven of our districts.
Is this something that the state is recommending or demanding?
It's part of the S-101 bill.
It's statute. It's passed. So, yes, it's demanding. So, we're going to roll that into our new bylaws update.
Any other questions? Thank you Nancy. Planning Commission?
We met last night. I have not written out my report yet. I will have it at the next meeting.
Okay. Boat Foreman?
Yeah, so, I've reached out to a couple of dealerships to get quotes on trucks. I'll send these down. This is a quote on one that came in last week and we all took, took a look at. And there's two different ways we can buy this truck through this dealership. We can buy the cabin chassis and then we can have it fitted ourselves. We can pick, you know, whichever vendor we want to work with and have it fitted up. Or, this dealer right here, you can buy the truck all set up. And I have the spec sheet with the boxes and the type of box and wing and controls and whatnot already on that.
Yeah, I think we each had one.
I thought it was the same, you know, two pages.
So, I mean, this is just a start. Hopefully, the next time we meet, we'll have another quote. And we're gonna, Dale and I are gonna meet with Mike from Viking on Thursday of this week and just go over the, the build sheet and just kind of pick it apart and see what we like and what we don't like and how that might change this price. But, as you can see right here, the 145045 is cabin chassis. And then, there's the Viking kit, you know, with the plow and the box and everything all set up. And with that truck all set up with, that's with a full warranty for seven years and towing and roadside service for seven years, which with AGT means if that truck goes down with a bad sensor for the next seven years, they'll come up with a service truck and fix it. Is opposed to us having to have the thing towed down there or, you know, whatever the case may be.
Okay, so that's roadside service for pretty much anything, not just if it breaks down?
But, anything for that truck.
Yeah.
That specific truck. It could be a sensor, you know, an exhaust fluid sensor that's, that's wrong.
Yeah.
You know, not like wear items. They're not going to come up and fix a taillight, you know, or anything like that.
But, anything that breaks, even if it's not like, it won't start.
Right.
Okay. Nice.
And they'll come up with a service truck. So, we'll get, we'll get some more quotes, but this is the first one that came in. And one of the challenges we face is this truck right here is actually, it's built and it's available, the cabin chassis. And they could put this thing together within the next couple of weeks with the box and the plow and everything all set up. The other companies that I've talked with, you can't even get a cabin chassis until, if we're lucky, the end of the first quarter of '24, which means probably the end of the second quarter of '24. And then, they're out six to eight months, you know, trying to get the thing set up. So, I mean, that's where we're at and the market's crazy. But, there'll be more to come and we'll, we'll get some more pricing as well. But, this is the only one that's going to be available for this year.
Yeah. They, they'll get it done.
Right.
So, what would be the difference looking at this winter for us having this truck versus us not having this truck? I mean, would we get by okay without it or?
I think the thing to do, I think, I think Dale liked this truck. It was a nice truck. I think we can get by without it. There's no doubt about it. We'll get some other pricing and see, you know, that'll be the determining factor.
Yeah.
And what else?
Are they a Viking dealer? Do they set it up themselves or do they send it somewhere?
Viking does that for, they're, they're partnered up with them in a sense where ATG is buying these trucks.
Right.
And now, they're offering them set up.
Yeah.
You know, not just cabin chassis, but they're working with Viking. You know, they're buying a big, a big block of them so they can get good pricing. And then, they're working with Viking. They're, they're setting them up.
So, the truck goes to, goes to Viking, gets set up and then it comes? Okay.
But, we still do have the option. Say if we want to go to HP Fairfield, we still do have the option to buy the cabin chassis and then do whatever we want.
And just go to Fairfield and stuff, but.
Right.
Is there any benefit in that that you could see?
Going to HP Fairfield as opposed to Viking?
Yes.
I think what we need to do is get more pricing.
It would be pricey.
I think, I think what you'd see is if you bought the cabin chassis, you're going to pay a lot more to have it set up separately at Viking as well as waiting eight months.
Yeah, if not longer.
Right. So, you know, it's, it's a bit of a cookie cutter, but I mean, it's all good equipment. And there's some, there's some savings there just the way that they're, they're set up to do that.
So, there's just one thing that I'd like you to ask them at Viking as an option is to have a reversible spinner so that you could shoot it in under the truck or you could shoot it the other way.
Okay. And I'll show you the build sheet too.
Yeah.
Just so that you guys can look.
And Dale knows that. I've told him that before because, you know, like going on a dirt road, you want the, your sanding under your wheels and then it'd be an option for just loading salt on, you could then go down the center line without switching hoses.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's a good idea.
I don't know, you know, you'd have to price it out to see what that, everything's electronic over hydraulic anyway.
Well, you can take a look at that. That's just for the truck.
Yeah, it's, you know, that's just something that I.
And we could ask him that. We're gonna meet with Mike from Viking on Thursday and some other things they have going on here.
I'm looking at that and I'm thinking that's a pretty good price right there from Viking to.
Yeah, that's a very good price.
Seems like we paid that, almost that for the last truck we set up.
Yeah.
Seems like it was around 80 grand or something to, to set that last Mack up.
No, I think it's a great deal and to have that truck, they could put that truck in if we wanted in the next couple of weeks. Now, if anybody else, you're, you're a year.
You're a year out, right? Exactly.
You know, when we're not desperate for it, we'll get some other pricing, you know, we don't want to be reckless and.
Right, we shouldn't jump on it just.
Right, because we don't have to jump on it.
Right.
At this moment, but it does seem like a pretty good, pretty good deal and it's a nice, I mean, it's a nice truck, good visibility. It's all set up, heavy spec.
And I believe Middletown has one all set up if.
A Freightliner?
Yeah, they had to buy one in a desperate situation there a couple of years ago when they crashed one of theirs and they got it from these guys. It was all set up, I believe, so.
Which it's basically identical to a Western Star other than the cab. The chassis, the axles, the transmission, I mean, everything is identical other than the cab.
Yeah.
You know, so it depends on if you want to sit in a Western Star or sit in a Freightliner. Other than that, all the other parts are, are the same. And a couple of other things those guys have been working on, they're finishing up mowing this week. They're only doing one pass on the dirt roads for now. They'll go back and, and clean those up again later. Wait Road is prepped and ready for slate. They're gonna start that on the 10th of July. And this week, they've been working with Rupert, which we do, as you guys know, we help them, they truck for us, vice versa. And they're gonna be helping them some again next week. And the International is up and running, so we, we got the, the gasket for the turbo and, and got that fixed, so all the trucks are, are up and running.
Who's gonna load the slate? Are we renting an excavator or?
Yeah, we are. Markowski had their, that big excavator down here for the road project and, and they didn't need it. They haven't been using it, so they left it here and we're going to, to rent that.
Okay.
It's a really favorable, favorable price. It's right here. We don't have to move it down. It doesn't have to get moved in.
And we'll provide, or either us or Rupert will provide an operator?
Mm-hmm, correct. And Rupert's renting that machine right now, so.
Is Leon still digging out of there or not?
Not that I'm aware of. I haven't.
I didn't pay attention when I came through tonight, but if his machine was still up on top or not.
Still up there, but I don't think he's moving much, using it much. Doesn't, looks like it's in the same place it's been for a while.
Okay.
You know, one of the nice things about renting those machines is we don't have to rent them by the month. We can run them by the week, you know, so if we only need it for two weeks, we don't have to rent a machine for, for the whole month.
Paying for it sitting there.
Right. Or you can, or you can rent it for a week and if you don't need it for a week, you don't, you don't pay rent on it. If you need it the following week, you just rent it for the week. So, that's, I mean, that's a huge advantage for us.
That's a lot bigger machinery we've ever rented too.
Yeah, it's a 50-ton machine. It's probably 120,000 pounds.
345, right?
349.
Yeah.
It's a 350 basically.
Right.
50 metric tons.
I don't think we've ever rented anything that big, so that, that should make it easier in the dealing with that and the reach and everything, so.
And very reasonable. Same with the dozer that we've been renting. You know, that's all by the hour. So, if we use it for 10 hours this month, you pay for 10 hours.
Yeah.
You know, it's, really works out well.
It must be nice to have a machine just extra.
Now, did we ever end up getting a bail chopper out of that small equip? We never got one. Did they use yours to do that bank over there or it just looks like that's blown on? They didn't shake that on there, did they or didn't?
I, I'm not sure. Looked like really good hay.
Yeah, it came out really nice, what I saw of it and that's why I was wondering if we'd ever.
Yeah.
Got the chopper or anything, but no, so.
Yes. Um, are you done? Did you have more? I have two things to add.
Oh, I might have more. Uh, let's see. Maybe you've got.
Okay. So, two other things from the highway. I got together with Dale and we worked on submitting a couple of grants. So, one that's fully submitted is the Small Scale Highway Safety Improvement Grant, which is for the North Palet Road. In doing so, in going through that whole process, we found out that the state is actually going to be improving the intersection of Route 30 and North Palet Road, so they're going to be adding two new stop signs, so one on either side of the intersection as well as one of those two-sided arrows across the road. So, that was originally what we were after, so now, the grant that we applied for is for some tree clearing and for some stop-ahead signs and for some road painting and stop-ahead painting and things like that, so to continue to enhance that. So, that came in, which is good. And then, we're also in the process of working with the MRGP funding to do some hydrologically connected roadway business. So, we're gonna work on getting Dale and Stephanie connected again just to make sure that's done correctly. And then, the other thing, the speed signs, so two of, three of the four speed signs went up. One of them, the batteries were dead, so we need to replace the batteries. And they have to be replaced by the outfit that we purchased them from, otherwise the warranty is null, so they're $125 each.
How many batteries do they take?
So, I didn't think it required a motion, but it, we determined that today.
For team maintenance.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let you all know. So, I'll get those on order. So, I'll contact, I'll have you in the loop, Julie, on that and then we should be all up and running.
Okay. Anything else on the highway?
No, I think that's all I have to offer.
Okay. Assessor, anything from them this week? No? Town clerk? Deb?
Deb?
I don't have anything else to add, so the vaults and the elevators still need attention. And the doors next, on July fourth. And I'll be out for two weeks. And I've learned, what else did I put on there? Kristen, I even forgot to bring my turn on.
Um, so the locks have been changed in the town hall and new keys are being replaced when old keys are turned in. So anybody here that is a key holder, come on down. See Deb.
Okay. Um, possibly, could you talk to, was that guy Matt, the electrician?
Yeah.
So when he's, and he's here doing this work upstairs, he could fix those lights in the elevator?
I'll have him take a look at it and see.
See what, see what's going on. Maybe it's just a simple thing, whatever. They need to be repaired and we really don't have anybody else, so?
Yeah. I'll do that.
Anybody have any questions for Deb? Okay, thank you very much, Deb.
Thank you.
Julie?
Uh, two warrants this week. Payroll was twelve thousand seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Account payable twenty-six, six oh seven thirty-five. Accounting for where those monies come from, general fund nineteen thousand eight fifty ninety-seven. Highway eighteen, four thirty-nine seventy. And wastewater three hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Deb stole my thunder, but the locksmith came today. The work was completed quickly. I'd already talked about weed whacking outside and around the basement door. Up the letter of intent for the auditor, could you approve of me signing this and returning it ASAP? It's just the letter that we intend to continue using the same organization to audit our books. John Muddit and I don't have a visit scheduled yet, but we have communicated and it will like be, be sometime mid-July that he would come down. We received from the state a hundred and fifty dollars for recording of application that goes towards recording fees. I've given you the final wastewater collection, the dilinbut levy, uh, that was turned over seventeen thousand four hundred and ten dollars and twenty-four cents. And that's it.
As far as the letter for intent, everybody okay with Julie signing that and sending that back? Okay. And weed whacking. Um, I saw Judy sent a note to me that she mentioned it to the White, the guy that works for Whitesit. And they said, no, they only mow the, that, they don't, they're not supposed to mow anything else around here. So I don't know if that's something we could get them to do as an option, or if we need to just find something else. Is that something that Matt would do in a routine thing? I don't, I don't know.
I don't know Matt, and I've not, everybody keeps looking at me about contacting Matt. I don't, that was not a guy...
He may.
Is that something that he could just, every couple of weeks come through and, and go make sure that the weed whack, the weed whacking's done by the...
You know what, now that you say that, he was, he was down there. He said he'd done it down there.
So he did it for Dale.
I haven't looked, so...
Dale got ahold of him, right?
So we can, would you like for me to figure out a way to get ahold of him, to ask if he would have the appetite to?
Right, to just, yeah, to pick up all the loose ends.
I have his contact information.
Yeah, 'cause he, he had to wear a camera on the back of his head. He was a little nervous down there. From the company down the street.
We need a motion for the warrants.
Yes, yeah.
Make a motion that we, uh, sign warrant two-three-zero-six-nine and two-three-zero-six-seven.
Can you change that to two-three-zero-seven-zero? Cause that was my error. So it's sixty-nine and seven.
Two-three-zero-seven-zero. I wondered why they weren't chronological.
Stepping back in time.
Two-three-zero-six-seven.
I'll, I'll second Bob's motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Clear. And there's a note on this, any big purchases that we can think of do need to be depreciated. Now, other than if we buy that truck, does anybody know of any?
So it would be for that, as already happened, and I would assume the truck buying would happen after July first. What I have right now is the, my new computer, the constables got a new computer, and the highway department got a new computer. So getting the three of them together in one year is good, cause we can bulk that and depreciate all of that together. I have a note, I don't know how much stuff we put on last year for Kelly Hill. He may want to add some of that culverts and things that we put on Kelly Hill. That's all I've come up with. I didn't know if anyone, if I'm missing something.
Don't think we've had anything, have we?
I did, I did want to reach out to Jill about any pumps that we may have purchased in this year. That was the only thing that I'm...
You have a list of all the purchases, right?
The list of all the purchases, yeah, but like, if it's a capital purchase, that would need to be on a depreciation list.
We replaced a motor on a pump.
Kind of up to me to just like remember them. And so I'm just asking for any insight if I've missed anything.
Only, the only thing I really know of that we, that we bought for a replacement thing, we didn't have, we still haven't done anything with the Jenner, but...
We had the molding, right?
Right, we put the new heater in, yeah, right, that was the other thing. But the motor, we bought a motor for a pump. And that was probably the only thing you bought from Applied Industrial in Rutland.
Okay.
I don't even remember what it was.
Yeah, you said the, the new heater on the wastewater plant, yeah.
Okay.
Is the, is the new air conditioner that we're getting gonna be in this year or last year? Would that count or not?
Actually, that should be a decision, I guess, that you guys make. We, if you approve of the, if you, you've already approved of the expenditure of the funds and we've already discussed what approximately that figure is going to be. So we would put that on, we could put that on the, the year that we're in right now, even though I'll pay it in July. That's fine. We have money in that item, so.
Might as well then.
So, yeah.
Nancy's coming tomorrow.
That will be another item that we depreciate.
He said he's coming tomorrow, so... Anything else there? Could, I, I guess that's about it.
Uh, that's all I had on my memo.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Julie? Nope, thank you. Emergency management director, nothing. Health officer?
There is something. So... Jennifer Sullivan sent an email to everybody that I think should be reviewed.
Outlining what's going on with the trailer situation.
Providing an update with the...
Did you guys all get a chance to look at that or?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're still working on the trailer situation and Nancy's working on it from her side too. But there, those two camper trailers are still there. They've been there for way too long. And a rudimentary outhouse and it's a bad situation, needs to get corrected. Wastewater facilities?
Yes, we got, um, there was just an email that came from Jill. I think it was like the evening of our last meeting.
Like about nine o'clock that night or something after.
So everybody should have gotten it. And it was just an overview of all the different reports that were submitted for May. The other item was that Jill is awaiting communication from John Kiernan regarding feasibility of a sledge holding tank and the potential cost savings that he may recommend for the current system.
Okay. Facilities report?
So I just made the note on the facilities report for the auditorium lighting and the power washing. But both of those were addressed, so...
Pretty much gone over it all there.
Pretty much off that on that then, huh?
All good at the library or? Good.
Do you have anything from the school board?
Yes. Um, so a report from June of twenty-three. At our regular meeting on June twelfth, we approved a memorandum of understanding to the staff twenty-two to twenty-five agreement. We monitored policy two-point-oh treatment of staff. Um, some of the language in this will be addressed in conjunction with the Taconic and Green Policy Committee. Two members of the Metawee Board are to work alongside the TNG Committee. We approved a wellness report, which is done annually. We approved policy F-three, fire and emergency preparedness drill. F-four, access control and visitor management. Four point, th- those are new, um, required policies that came through the most recent legislative session. So they came down from Vermont, um, where we were required to adopt them. Uh, we also monitored, um, and reviewed policy four-point-two, board job description, four-point-three, agenda planning. Several of these policies have language that we are also going to be reviewing. The two Metawee members alongside the Taconic and Green Policy Committee. Our next board meeting will be July tenth, and it will only be virtual on Google Meet. And as always, we welcome public comment during our regularly scheduled meetings.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, if I can put on my planning commission hat really quickly. In, in updating the town plan, which we do every eight years, there is a section on education. And looking at the information that was in there in twenty sixteen, we're gonna need, it talks about like, you know, how many students and things. Um, who would we contact in the, in the school system to update that information?
Um, I would recommend contacting Celeste Keel. And I can forward you her email address.
If you do that, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
And we're good? Thank you. Holder unfinished business, Max Market, parking?
I put you down there, I don't know if you still needed that, but I...
Yeah, I do.
Okay, good.
Gibbs, Gibbs unfortunately had to leave because he closes up the store at eight. He empowered me to represent. I don't know what he asked me to do, but anyway. From a zoning standpoint, we reviewed the permit that he was issued by the DRB. And that store, business only, so that's, we're excluding his future plans that he ever puts in a restaurant. The store only, um, requires him to have fifteen spaces. So he fulfills that requirement with the four spaces he has beside his building, not, one is it, not anything in front. He has four beside his building, plus two in his driveway. That counts as six. And then he has nine along Route Thirty. So the DRB permit is fulfilled by those spaces. So I'm telling you that the spaces in front of the store aren't, were never part of his plan, um, for that permit. So then I spoke with Dale about it, because, um, John Weiss came and was willing to stripe and measure, but then we weren't sure how, how wide the roadway had to be and all of these other issues. So Dale reached out to the state because he thought the state had a right-of-way coming down and around that corner. And I just received notification that, from Dale, he had communication with the state. And the state basically said, um, no, the state right-of-way travels with the roadway. I don't know, I don't understand some of these things. Something about there is an easement for DIs that are connected to their closed system. I don't know what a DI is. It is a drainage?
It's a storm bearing, yeah.
And, um, he says ask for the parking that looks to be on town property and that the signs, light striping, et cetera enforcement would be the town's responsibility. I also know that Dale said that he is in favor of striping a center line and have fog lines. Again, I don't know what fog lines are.
The, the white line on the, on the outsides.
To have that painted as well, so that people know that they're not supposed to be parking in that area across from the front steps that's designated as a no parking zone. So I guess at this point, it's kinda up to whatever the town wants to do as far as determining whether you want to allow parking in front of the store or disallow parking in front of the store. And whether you want to stripe school street so that people know it's a two-lane road up there.
What did Gibbs say?
Pardon?
What, what did Gibbs say?
Gibbs, I mean, Gibbs is just trying to stay neutral, I think, on the whole thing. O- obviously, I would think it would be in his best interest to want to have parking in front of the store, but I don't think... I mean, I don't, you'd have to ask Gibbs, I guess, what his position is, but again, it's, he's also really concerned about the safety aspect.
Yeah, I nearly hit someone when I came down here. They were backing out with a pickup truck and I was crossing the road and, yeah, I swerved.
I mean, we haven't, we haven't contacted emergency services, but I think that's where Dale's coming from, is to say, you know, if he's concerned that you wouldn't be able to get an emergency vehicle down the road the way the parking is there now.
Frank?
Usually, if we have a ladder truck coming from Granville, making that corner with a bunch of cars sitting there, would be real challenge for a ladder truck, uh, for this, this building or the, or the library in particular, or a farm.
What if we first, I mean, what if we went with Dale's suggestion and striped the center and the fog lines? And then, and striped that area where there's no parking, you know, so that people know not to park in that place across the street? And what if we did that and then saw if people, I mean, not, not necessarily put a no parking sign in front of Max Market, but what if we striped it and saw if people stopped parking when it's obvious that they're parking across the center line of the road?
I just have a general question as an audience member. Who's going to be responsible for the enforcement of the no, if there's any no parking put into place? Because I know there's a no parking, I mean, there's no parking sign already and everybody parks there. And there's also no parking on the other side, um, you know, outside of McChesney.
On the Route Thirty side, McChesney parks in.
And there's always cars parked there. So my only curiosity is if doing all of this, who will then be responsible for enforcing it?
That would be the constables or?
Frank?
But only if someone calls, probably.
The thing that gets my attention when I see no parking is tow-a-zone. Cause that means empowerment fees. And you don't have to collect any fines. You have to, the yard is taking care of the vehicle and had to tow it. The guy's owed the money by the car owner.
In my opinion, I think the first step is to eliminate the, the parking on the other side of the street where they pull off there. So if we... And then maybe have him put up some signs, pull all the way to the curb, you know? Or a lemon on a vehicle, you know?
The parking on the other side of the street is probably the, the biggest issue.
It is the biggest issue, most of the time. We get a lot of people that don't pull all the way to the curb, all the way up to the steps. You know, they'll stay back ten feet. You know, and... But I mean, the, the kind of vehicle parked there, I guess if you're driving one of these great big duly trucks or something.
Compact car slide.
Yeah, it's, it does make sense. And Gibbs also said that he wasn't opposed to striping off the corner up farther so that you could see around the brick oven also, you know? Which is usually a big issue also. Also, you know, which is usually a big issue also, so. And that would eliminate two, you know, people parking twice there.
Are there any rules about accessibility parking? Like, people that require handicap parking?
I'm sure, I'm sure there's gotta be some.
There is a, there is an accessible spot right up there, right?
It only has to be a certain distance from your business.
I'm just wondering if you make.
I actually think you can get in from, you know, the side.
Well, mostly I'm curious about like, if you make those, those front spots kind of right in front of the building more catered towards handicap accessible parking, then that, they wouldn't be as available for.
I don't think there's any way, is there any way to get up the steps?
Well, on the, um, like, side closest to where the ATM is and the brick oven, that's just.
That's gradual, there's no step at all.
There's like, one spot where there's not really a step. I mean, you know, but.
I haven't looked that close the other day, I just wasn't sure.
I'm sure because of the age of the business, that there's a lot of stuff grandfathered that would make it so that it doesn't have to necessarily follow a lot of the accessibility statutes. I think make, it makes sense to start small with some striping and see how that goes. And I'm just gonna beg for forgiveness, I'm gonna be the first car pulled out of that no parking across the street. That's gonna be me.
We're all guilty of it. We can sit here and say that, yeah, let's do this, let's do that.
It's a bad idea, we'll do it anyways.
Julie's gonna contribute to the towing fees.
I think from a liability standpoint, I think we have a responsibility to let people know that they are parking in the road. They may still park there, but at least they know then that they're taking a risk in their parking in the road. Right now, they may think that those are legitimate parking spots, and they don't know the liability. I mean, we could be liable as the town. But at least, at least if it's painted, then they're gonna know that they're taking a risk. You know, they're parking in the road.
That they're in the traveled lane.
That's right.
I agree.
The center line painted and the fog lines, and then, then they know they're in the traveled portion of the road. It's clear that they're in the traveled portion of the road, and that's against the law.
And they should be aware of that. I mean, most people probably don't even realize that that's, you know, they're parking in the road. You know, which, I mean, he needs more parking for the store, so it's too bad that we're gonna potentially discourage people from parking there. And they may still park there, but at least if they park there, they're gonna know they're parked in the road. That's on them, at that point. We've put all the fair warnings out there by painting it, and.
So do we wanna contact, do we wanna contact Dale and have him arrange with somebody to stripe that area? That, the general consensus of the board?
I think so.
Do you wanna make a motion, somebody? Was your, that, your thought a motion? Is it, does it need a motion?
I don't know if it really even needs a motion, it's just maintaining our, our right of way, you know.
We don't necessarily make a motion that we're gonna repair a road or something.
But, and we never, we never make a motion to have the state paint any of the rest of the lines on the road.
Okay.
Very good. So this would include the center line, the fog lines on the sides. Would it involve making those, um, the diagonal lines in the no parking spot?
That's why I was thinking about a motion, so I could know what I'm asking Jill to do.
Let's, let's start, let's start with a center line.
I think that's a dirt outparking.
Oh, there's a dirt spot, yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, it's gravel.
And I'm sure there's a minimum width for our lanes, you know, we don't just go with the, the center line and then the minimum.
Center line, sidelines, okay.
Do the three lines that are in our responsibility and the rest of it, we'll, we'll see how, how it all.
Oh, Nancy, Nancy is.
What, Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanna mention too, what Perry said too, and to also line out that area up by Gibbs picnic tables so that nobody parks there. That was part of the lining project.
Okay, that was part of the, the design, the, the ERB.
If a line company will do that, we'll probably have to. Or maybe the state could do it when they do the bridge.
Maybe the state could do it, or, as I said, that, you know, the fire department had offered to line parking spaces. Perhaps we can even talk them into lining that area just as a safety precaution.
And there's plenty, there's plenty of people around that do parking lot lining and, and stuff like that, so.
So I just need, does, do you, do the highway liaisons have a clear understanding of what lines need to be painted? Because I don't, so, just wanna make sure.
We do.
Okay, good.
I have another point too. The signage where the, quote, fog line is going, perhaps we can put either additional signage, or if you pull into that spot, you have to crane your neck up to see that no parking sign that's closest to the intersection. So I don't know if you can either bring the signage down or add additional signage to that pullout spot.
On the McChesney side.
Yeah, on the McChesney side.
Next, that was the spot that we decided was the most dangerous spot, right, and people parked there.
So I guess we got that. We have our next step on that project. New business, and there's no other old or unfinished business. New business, Discover Book Dropbox.
Um, did you see that email? There was. Did see it. Um. So it looks like it came from the Solid Waste Alliance Communities, and it is the idea of a free collection box. Um, there's free collection, free pickup. They will give you tonnage from your collection sites for quarterly report use. They take all hardcover and softcover books, they also take CDs, DVDs, and audiobooks. They're wondering if Politt would like to have a box.
Where, oh, Harley?
It sounds like that would compete with the Politt Public Library book, annual book sale, and we rely on people's donations.
Okay.
Very good.
I guess that's a known.
Sounds like, I think you have the best answer for that. Anybody else have any comments?
If they would only just take the CDs and DVDs.
Well, I think that was part of the email, it was like, oh, maybe not the books, but the CDs and DVDs, but it's.
We took CDs and DVDs. Yes, but no VHS tapes.
What's this world coming to?
All right. Any, oh, new business, I got documentation from the lawyers about it's regarding the case against Rob Lee Farm. If anybody's interested in looking at all the legal paperwork. And it's basically between, um, Michael Wesco and Act two fifty. But we're all, we're an interested party in it, anyway, so we'll get all the documentation if anybody's interested. Anything else under new business? Public comment? Frank?
We got three. Uh, number one is the town plan, when I was redoing it the other day, it was approved in twenty sixteen, had a plan for the Village of Politt's speed limit changed to twenty-five. And so obviously, we're hence doing our new town plan is, is it a desire to still have that be as part of the town plan to have speed limit twenty-five under thirty. That's part one. Cause we're redoing the town plan.
I mean, we asked the state for that before, didn't we, so we, we can't get it right now, but I think, I mean, I think we'd still like it.
Speed limit adjustment?
I don't know what's changed since the last time the board asked for that.
Okay, you can leave that language in.
That's just me.
Number two is, um, is there's going to be a tax sale at noon tomorrow? Is that, was warned on the, for the twenty-eighth?
I haven't heard any updates on whether or not anyone wants to be, so I assume it's still happening. So we'll need a board member present to, um, sit. Bob, excellent.
And that's two properties in West Politt?
Yes.
And, uh, they have until what time to make payment in order to avoid the sale?
I don't know.
And, what was that, Bob?
I believe today, the sale is just tomorrow.
So it's gonna go on no matter, it has to be paid by today, the day before?
I think that if they pay it before the time of the sale, but I could be wrong, I don't know. I do not know.
Okay, and the thing is on the warning, it mentioned listers. So maybe the boilerplate needs to be changed, it just take, rearrange that lister's name, cause we don't have listers anymore. And the last one is, is that Dave Ricard, I asked him about where the fox was shot, cause I thought he might have done it as animal control, he didn't. And it was seen down on the south side of village on one fifty-three at the last, I knew that Norrie's kids saw it on their porch. But there was one shot, Dave said, up towards the dump side of, of the village, or the landfill or the quarries, under the porch. So he says, then fishing game came and took that and tested positive. So that was the one that was taken from right then, that spot. So the question is, is, was there a family of foxes, a more of one fox that would, would have been incubating the rabies disease, and no one's seen something since? Um, but that was, um, but nobody in West Politt knew about it unless they were on Front Porch Forum. And, um, Jennifer posted it on Front Porch Forum, and she put, you know, she did all the notifications she could, but it was still people who were offline with the whole narrative didn't know that there was something like that in town, and there's a lot of kids in town nowadays.
Okay. Anybody else have any public comment?
I have noticed our constable active, one of them active on Route thirty anyway in town, so. Maybe make our roads a little safer. He was pulling cars over yesterday afternoon on Route thirty.
Did he get you, Robert?
Nope, I didn't. He was busy.
He was busy.
Okay.
Move, we adjourn.
That was second?
What's that?
All in favor?
No, we won.
Everyone second.
Thank you all for coming.